So there is dinner over there, so please feel free to serve yourselves before we get started. Yeah, yeah, that's, everybody please get some food and then we'll get started. Yeah, hey Jennifer, can we get started in two minutes? Oh, okay. Okay, let's, let's get started with the recordings. And it is 5:04 and we'll call this October 26th, School Board of Directors' Regular Meeting to Order. And the first session is a study session with the City Commercial Island City Council. So we have these type of meetings, joint sessions, once a year because we've got a unique situation where the city and school boundaries completely overlap. And so we have these meetings to share and see where we can find synergies and just keep the dialogue going between the two groups and keep our great relationship strong and solid. So I think we've got an opportunity for the City Council to do their roll call first and then we'll continue with, then I will continue with introductions. So Debbie, please.
Mayor Bruce Bassett, Deputy Mayor Debbie Bertland, Councilmember Dan Grous, Councilmember Salim Nice, Councilmember Wendy Wyker, Councilmember David Wiesentiner, Councilmember Vincent Wong. Can I just remind you guys too, a lesson learned from the last meeting, can we just make sure we pass those microphones around? That way we capture all of the things that you guys are saying into the recording. Thank you.
Sure, thank you very much. So with that, let us, we've got a few people who are new here for our first linkage. I believe on the school district side, I'd like to introduce Donna Koloski, our new superintendent. I don't believe all council members have had a chance to meet her, but hopefully during this linked session, we'll get to connect a little bit more. Donna, would you like to say a few words about yourself?
I think I've met most of you, except for Mr. Salim. So it's been a great couple of months. I come from California, but was originally raised in the Pacific Northwest, outside of Vancouver, British Columbia. So this has been like coming home after 30 years in public education in California. So I've had a wonderful welcome here and excited to have this great relationship. This is very unique that a city and a school district have the same boundary. So it certainly makes for great collaboration.
And on the City Council side, Salim, I believe this is your first linkage as well, isn't it?
Yeah.
So welcome. Would you like to say a few words about yourself too, as introduction?
Just a longtime Merson resident, moved here in 78, grew up, went through Merson schools. I think Northwood opening is, hearkens back to my past because I went to Mercer Crest, which was kind of as close as you could get to the 4th Elementary at that time. So, nice to meet you Donna.
So welcome everyone. I think that's, that's it for new folks. Julie, we introduced you last year, right? So let's move on to the agenda items. First agenda item is to discuss the school district and city funding constraints. And we've got a set of presentations here.
So Ty Bergstrom, our Chief Financial Officer, has so graciously come here. He is a brand-new dad of baby number three, first little boy, two days ago. So not only thank you to Ty, but a huge thank you to his wife for letting him come to do this. Thank you Ty.
Absolutely. Good evening, Board of Directors and Councilmembers. So there's been a lot of discussion, especially in the news lately, about the McCleary fix and the education overview. What's happening with the state budget and what's going to be happening with the future funding at Mercer Island. And House Bill 2242 changed a lot of things in school finance. It changed pretty much everything. One of the, some of the key focus points are the additional salary allocations, the raising of salaries for all the staff members that are applied or funded through the state's prototypical school model. That's how districts are funded in Washington State. They have a prototype school based on enrollment and the number of students drives the number of staffs applied. The new bill affects collective bargaining and supplemental contracts. The traditional method of paying teachers above and beyond the state will be changing significantly. There will be new measures for accountability and transparency. Districts will be moving away from their individually negotiated health benefits into a state benefit board, or a school's employee benefit board. And then huge changes to the levy structure and what we can do with levies and how we can collect levies. The purpose of 2242 was the legislature's effort to meet the state Supreme Court's requirement to fully fund or amply fund education in the state. And in their minds, they did that through increasing salary allocations and revising local funding to reduce districts' reliance on local levies and increase the transparency and accountability of the funding. The current salary allocation model, it's the way funding is allocated toward staffing, staffed teachers, functions on a grid of experience and education. So the more experienced you are, the more education you have, the more money will be funded to the district. That's going away completely. Every district will now be required to negotiate local salary models, which is going to cause significant struggles as teachers move from district to district or as we try to compare ourselves to remain competitive in the market. As I mentioned, salaries for our teachers, our administrators and our classified staff, the funded salaries are increasing. And one of the new focuses or new items of the bill is that salaries will be increased by a regionalization factor. So the higher that cost of living within the district's boundaries, the greater the funding that is attached to salaries within the budget. So our teachers will be getting an 18% increase over the state-funded average. Beyond that, we can allow for STEM teachers and special ed teachers, as well as some English specialist, English language learning specialists, a 10% increase over the state foundation. And the new model, the new salary allocation is going to be reviewed every six years. Part of the accountability and transparency is that we will now be reporting the total earnings of all staff to the state. The state is doing a phased implementation of the bill. So in school year 1819, we'll be getting half the funding increase with full increase in 2019 to 2020. Minimum salaries for teachers will be $40,000. The average funded will be $64,000. And that's not including the 18% that will be coming toward teachers. Again, so one of the major structural changes to school funding is this incredibly confusing term enrichment. We don't consider what we do within the district and our community members don't consider it enrichment. What the state considers enrichment is anything that is funded beyond the state base allocation. So the additional teachers we have, the seventh-period day, that's in the state's mind all enrichment, but that's what our community expects for their kids to as a base education. So when we, when we use the term enrichment, it's really anything that's beyond the state base. Collective bargaining agreements are, that are in place will not be impaired. So the contract that we just settled with the teachers and classified staffing unions will not be affected. Supplemental pay, moving forward within the bill, supplemental pay cannot exceed the employee's base education hourly rate. And we can only pay additional funding to teachers for activities and programs that they participate in that is beyond basic education. So outside of the school day, so clubs, music, imagination destination, all those type of programs. And beginning September 2017, so beginning this year, we must annually report to OSPI the amount of funding that we've been paying to our teachers above and beyond the state-based allocation.
Ty, can you tell us how long the current collective bargaining agreement is?
It's for two years. So it goes for 1718 to 1819.
And, or the, I guess in general, are the benefits, is it a better package than what would be otherwise?
It's fairly consistent with what's going to be coming in terms of salary-wise. We don't know what the health benefits are going to be looking like coming in the future. We managed to negotiate a fairly competitive healthcare package for our staff. We don't know what that's going to be looking like. But in terms of base salary and max salary, that will be allowed by the state. It's fairly close to what we have now. Health benefits, as I mentioned, there is the new School Employees Benefits Board, which is exciting. Existing healthcare plans will remain in effect through December 31st, 2019. So January 1st, 2020, we will be moving to SEB. And all health benefits will be removed from local bargaining. So we will no longer have that option to negotiate with our unions.
But we will still have the cost.
Yes.
So we will still be paying whatever the cost is for each of our employees to the SEB for the health benefits. So it's still yet to find out if this health benefits pool of all state education employees is going to have the reduction that is anticipated.
Sorry, when you say reduction, that mean fewer services? It's a lesser healthcare package?
We don't know.
Potential reductions. Again, we have no idea what SEB is planning right now. They're just in the information gathering stages. As the, as I mentioned earlier, there is new accountability and transparency through 2242, which means an entire new set of accounting. We will have to create an entire new set of books to handle local levies, new accounting structures, new tracking. We will be submitting in the future levy expenditure plans. So every dollar that we plan on spending, we will have to account for somehow to the state auditor's office who audits us every year. School boards must adopt a policy regarding audit findings. And we will be moving towards a four-year budget plan, rolling budget. And now the really exciting part, levies. So the, as we've all heard and as we've talked about frequently, the state property tax is increasing to $2.70 per thousand of assessed value. It's approximately an 82 cents increase. The way that the bill is structured as of now, it replaces the local maintenance and operations levy, which we've used for the longest time to, that we've used to add additional teachers, add additional programming, and pay our teachers competitive wages, a living wage. That's going away and is being replaced with this new enrichment levy, which restricts how we can use the money. What it restricts us to, we're still finding that out. There's a lot of ambiguity in the bill. We think we can still do most of the programs that we are carrying on right now in terms of educational programming, additional staffing, class size reduction. That should continue. Previously, levies were collected on a percentage basis. Every fall, we'd get a statement from OSPI telling us how much we could collect out of our voted-in levy based on a percentage of the previous year's expenditures. That model is going away and it is now the lesser of a dollar, 50 per thousand of assessed value or 2,500 per student. And as we mentioned before, the levy plans, what we plan to do with our levies must be submitted to OSPI and be approved before the levies can go on the ballot. There is still some ongoing discussion and clarity coming from OSPI as to when exactly that will be happening. At this point, it looks like we are not subject to that plan as of now, but we would plan to submit a plan to OSPI anyways. Local revenues, as I mentioned, local revenues, the local levy will have to be deposited in a sub-funder, a separate accounting system to track how we use those expenditures. So all the staff members that we fund through this local levy will be contained within its own separate set of books. And they are making changes to local effort assistance. Mercer Island has never received local effort assistance, so it doesn't necessarily apply to us. And then how does, how does this work for Mercer Island? And I think I should probably stop to take some questions. Are there any questions?
So kudos to you, obviously it's the endurance that you've had as this process has worked out. And then equally, the amount of ambiguity that still seems to exist. Is there a sense that, for example, the healthcare plan and some of this levy formula work will be done in the near future? Or is this something that could be dragging out for months and months and months? Is there something of when?
It is a priority for all the districts in the state. There is, Mercer Island, from all the numbers that I've been able to crunch, is going to be about a net neutral impact to us. The money that we lose from our local levy will, from the calendar year 18 to calendar year 19, we're going to be losing about $6 million in our local levy. That's going to be about the same amount of money that we're going to be collecting from the state in an increased funding. So it's going to be, excuse me, sorry, I apologize, it's going to be a wash. Other districts, they collect more than $1.50 and more than $2,500 per student. So either way, it's a negative impact for them. There are several districts throughout the state that this bill makes them losers, very large losers in terms of funding. So there is a high priority to get, essentially get it fixed. But as to what that means, we don't know. And it really depends on the state Supreme Court and what their decision is.
And just so you know, the state Supreme Court took their first look at this on Tuesday, on the 24th. And there isn't any anticipated decision, so to speak, before the new year.
How does that $2,500 per student translate into a levy amount?
We are currently about 4,400 students, so $2,500 per student equals about 10.8 million.
How much per mil, or per thousand dollars?
How much per thousand? It's about 76 to 77 per thousand, 70 cents per thousand. Currently, our levy is $1.22 per thousand. That's my best estimate as of now. As, there is potential for change. It's the highest, the levy is going to be one of the highest priorities for all the districts as we talk with our legislators. You know questions? All right. So, and this is just some additional levy information as we move forward. This is information that we presented to the board and it is available on the district's website. As we mentioned, the levy structure has drastically changed. And what we can do under 2242 is programs, activity and staffing beyond the basic state apportionment that are funded through local efforts, which include our local levy, foundation, PTAs, other grants and donations and contributions. Now, the bill doesn't separate local levy from local revenue. And when they talk about local revenue, that means the school foundation, PTAs, anything that does not come from the state or the federal government. So anything that comes from the local community or from the community of Washington State at large, if we got a grant from somewhere back east in, like Spokane, that would count as a local revenue. So that's all that money that has to go into that separate set of accounting books. And that's all considered by the state now to be enrichment. So again, enrichment is kind of a funny term because we don't consider it to be enriching. We consider it basic ed here in Mercer Island. Courses beyond the state graduation, minimum graduation requirements, that will be considered enrichment. Additional staffing and program components, class size reduction, program components, funding for components of the prototypical school model. So that means material supplies and operations costs, utilities, professional development, helping our teachers become better teachers, extracurricular activity, coaching, imagination destination, all these other clubs become extracurricular and can be enrichment. Extended school day and school year, the seventh-period day at the high school, that's part of that. Early learning programs and program administration and extracurricular stipends. So essentially, not much has changed, but there are still some restrictions as to what we can do with it. And I know this is really small print and I apologize, but this is everything we've done with our levy. This is what we've succeeded in getting our children in the community and helping, to help them succeed. I'm trying to find the, there we go. So the seventh-period day at the high school, taking elective sequences for all your four years, career in technical education, music, drama, taking the required number of courses in particular core area, additional science, expanded electives. Beyond the traditional one-year biology, chemistry, physics, we have an immense number of advanced placement courses at the high school. In fact, the high school has more successful AP students than any other school in the state. The additional FTE to support students and the online learning program at Crest, we have roughly 80 students that are enrolled in online programs at the Crest that allow them to take additional electives or credit recovery. So courses that they failed, they're allowed to take an online course to recover that credit. Smaller class sizes to allow focusing for students who are struggling. So two-year algebra sequences, English language learning programs. We've paid for our additional professional stipends out of ARC or the additional responsibility contracts, the money that we pay to teachers beyond what the state pays. Ongoing professional development, stipends for other opportunities, coding programs, community service, athletic programs. We have 65 sports teams at the high school. We're going to be adding two more unified sports, unified basketball, unified soccer, I believe. And enhanced library collections, some curriculum materials. A good chunk of our curriculum material is donated through the foundation, the fundraising efforts of the foundation. Classified support in classrooms with overloads, special education, English language learning students. We have a phenomenal special education program here. And families do come to the island for the special education program. So we have a growing and healthy population of special education students. And the K5 Spanish program is not considered basic education. The art and PE and music specialists at the elementaries are not considered basic education. So that's all that we've managed to get for our children and provide for our children within the community out of the local levies and out of the foundation and PTA. Julie?
Ty, I'm wondering, since my kids use iPads and technology, I mean, is that also?
Technology comes out of the capital projects and technology levy, which is, does not fall under 2242. That's, they did not. That's, they did not touch that, thankfully. So, any other questions? All right. So this is just a brief timeline of what we're looking at for changes. As I mentioned, starting in 2019, calendar year 2019, so halfway through next school year, we will be changing from the old percentage-based formula to the new lesser-of formula for levy collection. Starting in calendar year eighteen, the state education tax increases by eighty-two cents. Partial funding of the new salary model starts in school year 2018, 2019. Full funding starts in 2019, 2020. So we will be, it's, as I mentioned, it's a phased ramp up of additional funding. And starting, starting in 2019, partway through the school year, we will be restricted, the new enhancement or enrichment restrictions start halfway through the year. So that's kind of an interesting conundrum we have. This is my best stab, best guess, based on numbers that I've received from OSPI, the King County Assessors Office, the Department of Revenue, as to what our taxes will look The numbers presented here are on a rate-per-thousand basis. There is an interesting funding quirk in Washington State. Not all counties assess their houses, their properties at fair market value, and so every year, the state Department of Revenue does a study, and they come up with a multiplication factor that you have to apply to your state education tax, which affects the rate. So in 2017, the state education tax was two dollars and three cents. We believe it's going to be somewhere in the range of two dollars and ninety-seven cents to three dollars, starting in 2018 and 2019. 2018, we're looking at two dollars and thirty cents per thousand for the locally voted-in taxes, which includes our maintenance and operation levy, and 2018 will be our last year of the old formula of the maintenance and operation levy. Our bonds, capital and tech levy, and we will not have a transportation levy. That's every six years. We've had one in 2017, we won't get another one until 2023. And we will be going down about ten cents per thousand, is my best guess, in 2018. And 2019, you can see the change in the local education levy or the educational maintenance and operation levy as we're putting it to the board tonight for vote for approval, goes from a dollar twenty-seven in 2018 to about seventy-four cents. And that represents about a six million dollar decrease in funding for the district, which will essentially be made up by the state. And as I mentioned, it's going to be about a wash. So as we move to the next slide, you can kind of see graphically the change as we move through the years. The blue bars represent the locally voted, excuse me, locally voted-in taxes. Gray bars represent the state tax, orange is the overall education-related taxes. They will be increasing significantly. It's about fifteen hundred dollars on a median value, median value home, which is, will be in 2018, about one point two million. However, the local education-related taxes will be decreasing. So some of that value will be made up with the reduction of the locally voted-in taxes.
Ty, I'm sorry, you know, on that 2019, that rate, about seventy-four cents, is that based on the twenty-five hundred dollars per student?
Yes.
Okay. And as far as the number of students, I mean, what year are you guys required to look at as far as?
So, when we, when we put forward the levy, when we put it to the board and we essentially submit it to vote for the approval of the public, we're basing the number of students that we're going out for on the projections by Dr. Les Kendrick, the tomographer. We have used Les for probably about twelve years, probably a little bit longer. We used his high-range projections. We will not be, we use the high-range projections to ensure that we have sufficient capacity for the levy. We, as a certification mechanism or a funding mechanism, OSPI, will tell us in the fall of the year before we collect what our collection will be based on the previous year's enrollment. So if we have an enrollment of four thousand three hundred and eighty-nine students at the end of seventeen eighteen, as we roll into the nineteen collection, we will be basing our collections on four thousand three hundred and eighty-nine students. Any other questions?
There was, there was discussion when Les was kicking off that study that I think you were looking for innovative ideas and thoughts on enhancing the projections, maybe making the projections more accurate. Did you guys use any different techniques to try and, or did you just use the same technique and pick the higher range?
So I took a, I took a look at Les's numbers. We do our own internal projections, and we use Les's as kind of a benchmark. Les has, and I did a correlation study to see how, what the relationship between actual enrollment and Les's projections are. Perfect correlations, one, his projections are point nine-three, ours are point nine-two.
His are point nine-three at which range?
Mid-range.
Yeah. So I did the same, and I found his mid-range to be very, very accurate.
Yes.
So higher range just gives you the cushion that you need.
Because, one of our concerns is, because there's this large push to change the lesser-of to the greater-of within the levy structure, if we were to move to the greater-of, a dollar fifty per thousand would equal about nineteen million dollars. So going from ten million to nineteen million dollars is a huge dump, and we want to be able to give ourselves some capacity within. Our projections will still sting within the model that has been developed by the legislature to allow us to enable to collect a little bit more should something happen. Or if we get a ton more students, which we always kind of hope for, would put us in whole kinds of problems, but more students is great because, you know, kids deserve the education here. If we see an increased number of students and we didn't budget for that, it would cause some problems for us because we'd have to, we'd have to find some way to fund that.
Couple other points. When Les did his new study, he did, we did take community input and input from the school board regarding other aspects of Mercer Island that are changing. So to think about light rail coming here and numerous other items, density increases in the town center, all that was taken into account in the new studies. Those studies are available online along with all the information that he utilized to come up with his new projections last year. That was one item. The second item, as Ty is saying, you know, we need extra capacity for this levy. One example would be that twenty-five hundred dollars per student is actually, doesn't increase with inflation right now. So, you know, next year, it's about twenty-five hundred dollars, the year after, it's about twenty-five hundred dollars. And so that's a real problem that they're also looking at fixing. So even basic things like that, how do you index this over time, hasn't been thought through. And so, capacity to do all that, it has to be put into our, into our ballot measure upfront, and so all that is applying into here. And we've done this in the past as well. Our previous local levies that we've done, we actually had additional capacity inside them when we voted upon them, but we actually collected a lesser amount every time. Thank you.
Just an interesting tidbit about demographics and enrollment projections. The most accurate enrollment projection indicator is birth rate. However, when we look at the birth rate from Mercer Island and the number of students that come in, the number of kids that are born that should be coming in, the number of kids that we receive are about a hundred and seventy percent more. So we receive significantly more students coming into kindergarten than are born on the island. So as much as we can try to be accurate, it's always going to be variable because people move here for the schools, or, and other reasons, but a lot for the school. We like to think they're here for the schools. This is a table where we look at per-student funding. These numbers, again, are drawn from OSPI's assumptions and our budgets. We have the actual fifteen, sixteen, and then the budget for sixteen, seventeen, which we are, we don't have actuals yet because we're in the process of closing our books. Budget for seventeen, eighteen, and then projected from OSPI, eighteen, nineteen, and nineteen, twenty. So there is an increase, OSPI is projecting an increase, I believe there is going to be an increase. The extent of the increase, I think it's not quite as rosy as OSPI thinks, but I think it's going to be, I think we'll essentially be fine for the district. And again, this is just a graphical representation of the per-student. The light blue line is our local taxes, or the MNO levy, the educational maintenance and operations levy. And you can see, as we move through seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, and then nineteen, twenty, you can see the decline in the local funding and then the compensatory increase in the green line, which is the state general purpose funding. And I believe that is that. Do we have any additional questions?
Question sort of related to, back to your birth rate, your birth rate point, which is, does the cost to educate a student change dramatically through this, their cycle through the school system? Does it go up?
Yes.
Okay. And then, do you guys model that, the cost that you'll incur, given the number, the size of the age group that's matriculating through the school? Or do you just blanket it across the number of students total?
The way that the reports are structured and the way that we budget and the way that the state budgets us, it does not look at that. What it does look at is the number of students at grade level, per grade level, and then there's a formula that, as I mentioned, the prototypical school, the prototype school that they, it's essentially the calculator. They throw in our enrollment numbers, they look at the students-staff ratios and say, here you go.
Thanks.
From the numbers you gave regarding the number of cents per thousand dollar assessed valuation, the state is greater, the local is lesser, and the difference is about, including the county correction factor, is about point four to point five, and also including the capital and technology going down about point oh-eight over the next few years. So the difference is about point four to point five, that we will be higher, taxed at a higher rate of. So that would be, for a million-dollar house, about, let's say, five hundred dollars.
Yeah. The savings associated with the lower increase will be about five hundred dollars. So if we're moving up fifteen hundred dollars, the overall increase will be about a thousand dollars.
I don't quite get that in the numbers, but that is in what it talked about.
Yeah.
Not a question, but just a general statement, I think. A lot of these numbers in our funding is presuming, and hopefully, that our levy will pass. And I think it's important for the community to know Mercer Island has always passed our MNO levies, and this represents twenty percent of our operation costs, and it's very important that it pass. And it's kind of a tricky year because the state has reconfigured things under McCleary. It's a big sea change for thirty-five years, and there's people out there in the state saying they've fully funded education, and that's, that's not the case. Fifty-eight percent of special education funding is going to be funded through this, through this levy, as well as a lot of things that you already went through that we consider basic education here on Mercer Island. And so, you know, I'm appreciative of the taxpayers, and it is going to cost more because they're essentially reducing our local levy rate. And as Director Myerson has said, you know, local levies is the most efficient way to fund our schools, but because we're, when we pay our state taxes, we pay, more of our money goes off-island. And so that's, that's what's going on in this. Sorry if that's not very clear.
That's embedded.
That's, well, we're going to vote on it, but it is proposed for February, but we'll vote on it later tonight. And just one thing, I just, I observed at the welcome for the new families at IMS, where I think there are about a hundred and fifty new families that came out. It's amazing to see how many people moved here to Mercer Island for education, and including people coming across the world who don't even speak our native language that have really just put a lot of trust in our community for education. And I'm very proud of our schools, and I hope we continue to support them.
Yeah, I would just like to echo what Ralph says. I certainly meet lots of students every morning when I walk my dogs around the two blocks close to here, and a lot of new parents, and we're really happy to have them. The maintenance and operations levy is something that Mercer Island has always passed, and I certainly hope they continue to do it. It really is essential for funding our schools, even if it's a lower rate than it was previously.
I agree with those comments, and I also wanted to recognize Ty for all the hard work he's put in, and thank you for that. Yesterday, Donna and I were at her first superintendent advisory council meeting, and we had several community members there, and Donna gave a version of this presentation, and they were all very in awe of the work that you've done, and we wanted to pass that thanks on to you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? If not, we'll move on to the, so Benson.
Can I just ask a question as far as the efforts to coordinate fundraising efforts between the schools and the foundation and the PTAs? I mean, is there a coordinated effort? I mean, obviously, it looks like we're going to have to rely more on the community in order to, you know, provide this enrichment as part of our education. So I don't know if there's ever, if it's been well organized or well coordinated. I mean, I mean, we just had the phone-a-thon, that seems to be going every year, but again, I'm just curious whether or not there is any kind of coordinated effort.
Go ahead.
So we, we do coordinate as best we can. We have a monthly PTA council meeting, and the director for the foundation comes to that as well, so that we are all on the same page as, as much as we can be. And you mentioned the phone-a-thon. I was calling as well, and many of the volunteers that were calling were our PTA parents and our PTA executive board. So to the best extent that we can, we do try to coordinate and collaborate on those efforts.
I'd just like to point out that this community is reasonably unique in its coordination from day one. The things that the schools need are reported and funded by the Mercer Island School Foundation and the various PTAs, and that's encoded in policy. There isn't a possibility of an outside group contributing money to leverage. Basically, a school funds with a small amount of their funds, as happened in some other communities. So we're all on the same page here.
I've had the benefit of being the school foundation co-president for a little while, and I think there's a great deal of coordination that does occur. I think, as Ty has mentioned, though, this is a sea change for us. In thirty-five years, our funding model hasn't changed. That's a huge change. Our local levy, so we've got a lot of legislative restrictions on how we fund education, as you can see by this bill. The state is increasing the funding to us, but also increasing the restrictions around the state funding. The state is defining how a reduction in our local levy, which is the least restrictive type of funding, we've dramatically reduced that, but we have not increased the programs that are now considered basic education. So we've got a real tricky situation here of splitting basically seventeen million dollars of previous funded programs into our new twelve million dollar bucket, which is a change for us. And the, right now, the savior has been the salary difference where we pay our teachers more for being in this area, regional cost of living increase, that's now being funded by the state. So we are okay on that aspect of it, but as we think about our programs improving... So we are okay on that aspect of it, but as we think about our programs improving, as we think about inflation, other costs hitting our programs, we don't have solutions for those. And I think, you know, this will be a reinvigoration of our schools' foundation, our PTA, and our school district, to rethink what our model needs to be to really maintain the level of excellence in education we have here today. This is, this is a really a big new change for all of us to get used to, and it starts by the community passing the ballot, hopefully in February, and passing the levy, rather, sorry.
Okay. Sorry, Julie.
Just one more question. Obviously, the state is making some assumptions that having a health medical pool may reduce costs. I'm just curious, many of the cities in Washington belong to Association of Washington Cities, where we come together and we buy health insurance and really try to reduce our costs. I'm assuming something like that already exists for the school districts? No, you have to go out and purchase your medical?
There is a, there is a large collective.
Right.
Purchasing through the WEA.
Okay.
But it is administered through WEA. We moved away from WEA, and we managed to secure 10% lower cost.
Oh, okay.
So it's, right now, it's competitive, and again, we don't know, we just don't know what the benefits are going to look like.
Uncertain.
Uncertain.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's move on to the next item regarding the city's financial challenges.
Yes, if you don't mind, I'm going to have Chip Quarter, he's our Assistant City Manager and Finance Director, present to you a, hopefully a high-level, very brief presentation about the financial challenges that the city is projecting, starting with our 2019 budget. And of course, you have an interest in this because of the school counselors that taxpayers are funding through the city. So Chip, I'll give it to you.
Good evening. Back-to-back finance presentations, yes. Ellie, I heard that Ally had made handouts of the presentation. I can, anyways, you have my sympathies dealing with back-to-back finance presentations.
Take a vacation.
I will be, yeah, yeah, right. I will be quick. I love the movie Apollo 13, hence Houston, we have a problem. I addressed the board, was it last year, I believe, or the year before, regarding our financial challenges? So just to summarize, our 2017, 2018 biennial budget, I needed almost $2 million to balance it, our operating budget. Looking out to the next six-year period, 2019 through 2024, our average revenue growth is projected to be just 2.3% per year. Average expenditure growth, almost 5% per year. That 2.5% differential is what's causing our projected deficits. Why? What are the drivers? On the revenue side, it's property tax. Unlike Bellevue, Redmond, Kirkland, Issaquah, which have a huge commercial retail sales tax base, we do not. And our property taxes make up 40% of our general fund revenues, and those cities, it averages about 20%. That revenue source, as you know, as you've heard, is capped at 1% per state law, plus the value of new construction, which on average is another 1%. So property tax is effectively capped at 2% growth per year here on Mercer Island. Personnel costs, we're a service organization, most of our costs are in people, not surprisingly, 71% in terms of salaries and benefits. Inflation is up over 3% currently. Based on that, our projected growth in costs is about 4% to 5% over the next six, seven years. By the way, feel free to ask questions as I go along. Let's do a little General Fund 101. This is where we fund most of our tax-supported services, police, fire, parks and rec, et cetera. And so the point I want to make is simply when you look at property tax, sales tax, and utility tax, that makes up 72% of our general fund revenues. This is very similar in Bellevue, Issaquah, Redmond, and Kirkland as well. I also want to note that sales tax, that 10% sales tax rate that you pay when you buy stuff here on the island or have stuff delivered here on the island, the city gets less than 1% of that 10% sales tax rate. We get a very small portion. Also, just a reminder, I'd mentioned earlier, we needed about $2 million to balance the 17, 18 operating budget. Half a million was needed in 2017 for the general fund. Let's look at the expenditure side. It's a $30 million budget. Again, as noted earlier, personnel costs are 71%. When you look at in terms of programs, police, fire, emergency medical services make up 44%. Again, that's pretty typical in most other full-service cities on the east side. Let's look at the YFS Fund, Youth and Family Services Fund, again, kind of a 101. Thrift shop sales, $1.5 million, doing very well. That's 56% of their total revenue sources. General fund support is higher than normal in '17. We've been contributing since 2015, $400,000 a year, plus I needed to contribute another $193,000 to balance, balance the budget in '17 for YFS. So that 193 is one time. I should also mention, just a reminder, that we get $60,000 a year from the school district as support for our mental health school counselors. Thank you. Looking at the expenditure side, speaking of our mental health. Yes?
If you don't mind going back to the YFS.
Sure.
Other revenues, would that also include, because YFS gets a tremendous amount of support coming from the community through, you know, MIPA is the one that of course jumps immediately to mind. Can you just tell us a little bit more about who's actually contributing that 1%?
Um, that.
Or is that putting you on the spot?
That, I'm, that's a small number that I just don't recall at the, at the top of my head. And the foundation is significant, and, and they are going from contributing, Cindy, where'd you go?
10%.
Right, they're going, beginning in 2018, 10% of the YFS budget, which is significant. That's going from, what is it, just around $200,000 and change this year to $279 next year. So a big increase on their part.
Thanks.
That much I remember.
Thanks, obviously.
Yeah. Looking at the expenditure side, school counselors account for almost a quarter of the YFS fund budget, $627,000 this year. For them, they're even more focused on, in terms of costs, are more in people, 83% in terms of salaries and benefits. So the structural imbalance, when you combine the deficits in the general fund and the YFS fund, that represents our operating budget excluding utilities, looking at tax-funded services. It grows from almost $2 million projected in 2019 to over $70 million in 2024. That's an average annual deficit of $4.5 million, pretty significant. What can we do? Well, we can look at the expenditure side of the equation, always an option. To balance the budget, when you look at the projected deficits from 2019 through 2024, that six-year period, we would need to cut 52 employees or a quarter of our workforce. Now, if that were to happen, that would, more likely than not, this is all a big discussion with the council, of course, if necessary, and the community, but that, usually what happens with cities is you look at your non-essential services first. That doesn't mean they're not important, that's just a technical term of art, non-essential, public safety is essential. But for most Mercer Islanders that I know, parks and recreation and youth and family services is number one in your hearts. I know it's number one where I live, out in North Bend, for my family. But technically, they are considered non-essential services, that's usually where you look first. However, because of the extent of the deficits, we would have no choice but to look at all city departments, including police and fire. The revenue side, I've heard lots of folks go, well, hey, let's just grow sales taxes, let's grow revenues that way. Economic development in the town center. Well, let me give you a little economic development 101. Mercer Island is a bedroom community. We're very like Sumamish in this regard. We don't have the sales tax base, as you already know, to state the obvious, that Bellevue, Issaquah, Kirkland, and Redmond have, and even Bothell for that matter. If we did economic development, significant, I estimate at most, it would generate maybe $100,000 to $200,000 a year, and that's being very optimistic. Why is that? Two reasons primarily. One, again, as I mentioned, of the 10% sales tax rate, we get less than 1%. That's a very small amount. Two, think about the Costcos, the Targets, all the major retail car dealerships, they're already covered in Seattle and in Bellevue, and Issaquah for that matter. They would not locate, even if there was the land, they would not locate on Mercer Island. And I don't know that islanders would want that, quite frankly. My, yes, sir.
Can you persuade Tesla to open an office here?
It's funny, it's funny you mention that because I tried, actually. I tried to get him next door to us when there was a property that was available, but I was unsuccessful, obviously. Just to kind of frame things for you in terms of what do major retail stores generate in sales tax revenue? Costco, those stores do over $100 million a year in, in revenue, okay? And so what you see for a city, that 1% of the sales tax rate, keeping in mind the food you buy, isn't subject to sales tax, right? Except for the daily stuff. That generates $1 million, $1.2 million in sales tax revenue for a city, sometimes more, depending on where you're at. Issaquah, it does really well. A car dealership, $3,000 to $400,000 a year. So that kind of, just kind of gives you a bit of a metric, if you will, in terms of what's required to really address revenue challenges. What about utility tax? The council has the ability, if they want to, to change the tax rate on the city's water, sewer, and stormwater utilities. Currently, that rate is 5.3% across all three utilities. Here's a, for instance, what if they increased it by 5% to 10.3%? That would generate $875,000. Well, that's great, but it falls way short of the $2 million projected deficit in '19, which grows at over $1 million each year thereafter. So it falls short because it's a small piece of the pie, just like sales tax is a relatively small piece of the pie. We are dependent on property taxes. And so that is, regrettably, depending on how you look at it, our best revenue option is to look to what's often called a levy lid lift, to increase the levy beyond the 1% cap that's in place. Community engagement plan, real quickly. We've already begun it. We met with, in terms of a telephone town hall, we had one on October 11th, I'm sure you've heard about that. We'll be doing another one on March 7th. We're going to be forming a community advisory group, a group of 20 to maybe 25 residents, and I'm looking forward to this. These will become our experts in the community. We're looking for a really representative sample of the community, not in terms of, not only in terms of gender, but in terms of educational background, in terms of racial background, professional background, in all respects, a nice stratified sample. And we'll be engaging them into the details. We're going to invite them in, and I'm going to open up the hood, and we're going to take a look at what's, what's under, what's going on with the city's finances. There'll be four, we'll have a kickoff meeting November 15th with them, but the real meet will happen in January through April, and monthly meetings, once a month meetings with them, on our operating funding challenges and our capital funding challenges. Those meetings are already scheduled. Community-wide meetings, currently three-year planned, one in January, February, and March. Those are meant to be two-hour meetings. For people who want to get something that is fairly meaty, they can come to those, and there'll be tons of time for questions during those meetings. And then we'll have a bunch of roadshow meetings, it's very much like the Chamber of Commerce meeting we had also on October 11th, very short kind of 15-minute kind of presentation, followed by 15 minutes or so of questions. Whoever will have me, the Rotary Club, whoever will have me, I'll be going there, and to meet with all those various island community groups. Please.
Thank you for the presentation, and also a big appreciation for the support of the mental health counselors. Just in terms of revenue sources, I was looking at the best start for kids, King County levy that passed, and I think we have a mileage rate of 14 cents that that goes towards.
It's just under, yeah.
And that's maybe $2 million that our island is paying into. Are we getting anything out of that? Because I think it's for healthy teenage, it's also for, I think, impoverished too, but I also think it also, arguably, it should go towards mental health of all communities. And I was just wondering if that's an opportunity that the city has looked at, or is King County sharing any of that money?
Cindy? Can you come up?
That's a great question. So we've been looking at all of the RFPs, the requests and proposals that come out, and really been monitoring everything that comes across as a website, and so we receive all of the emails for the funding pots that are available. We've applied for a couple, we've not received any funding. We don't, we won't qualify for some of them. It's not to say that we won't, but there's many that we don't, and it's because they're really trying to get higher-risk communities. We're also looking at seeing if there are other communities similar to ours that have a wider group, a wider population, so they would have low income or more kids at risk, as well as kids like ours, like Friends of Youth. So far, we haven't had a match, but we are bird-dogging all of the RFPs that come out to see if we can.
Why do they look at communities at risk rather than kids at risk? Because we certainly have kids at risk here, and one kid in this community at risk is the same as a kid in another community at risk. And so it baffles me why they try to average amount and only support the kids that are in the poorer communities.
Because, if I could address that, because in communities like ours, there's far more resources to come around your kids, whereas in those communities, there are fewer pots of resources, and there are fewer non-financial resources in those communities as well.
So you're saying is if this levy lift isn't implemented, maybe we'll be along with the poorer communities regarding that?
Other questions from folks? If not, I have a handout for you. Julie?
Thank you. I wanted to extend my appreciation to Donna. I've talked to her about serving on the community advisory group, thought it would be a great way for her to meet more community members. So I, I do think it's important that the school district is engaged in this process, and so I really appreciate your interest in it, and I'm looking forward to working with you.
Okay. Seeing that you've had your fill of finance talk, I'm going to hand out a little information sheet.
Sorry, sorry.
Yes?
There's a question in the audience.
Please.
Unfortunately, this is a meeting of the school board, and so you could ask your question during public input or in email later to the, to Julie.
I'll be down here in a second.
And the rest of the city council. So apologies for that, but that's the structure of this meeting.
I'm just going to hand out a little public information sheet for the group that's, we're making available to everywhere, wherever we go, whatever the community meeting format is, just a little front and backer to help kind of paint the picture.
Is this available online?
It is.
Okay.
Thank you very much. With that, are there any other questions for Chip first? And I think, otherwise, we will proceed with a discussion around the school counselors. And there were some extenuating issues that the school district has around school counselors and our need for funding certainty in the 18, 19 school year, I believe. So would a school director like to talk about that a little bit? Or, or Julie, since you've already shared it?
And I appreciate, yes. In preparation for tonight's meeting, we had a chance, Debbie and I had a chance to meet with Dave and Donna to talk about this, and naturally, your, your calendar year is a little off from our calendar year. So the question that the district wanted to know is, you're going into '19, you, you have to have a balanced budget, you're projecting $2 million in deficits, but because your school year goes into '19, basically, where would the city be in funding our counselors? And I, so we have contingency. The council just in fact approved some additional contingency funding for potentially looking at some gaps in '19. Chip and I will be coming to the council for direction in June of next year, because that's when we'll start preparing, the staff will start preparing the 19, 20 budget, we do a biennial budget. And I would be recommending funding the counselors through that school year, at least through '19. But ultimately, I will be really seeking the direction for the council on whether or not that's something we could do. You know, that's a good, what, almost 10, 10 months, eight months from now, it's hard to know what other circumstances might change, but at least I would like to at least try to keep you whole for a school, you know, that academic year.
So I think because the fiscal year is, it's kind of important, so we go calendar year, we're January through December. So we go calendar year, we're January through December. If I understand correctly, you guys are September 1st through August 30th? Yeah, I'm seeing nod from Ty, which is great. Okay. So specifically, what I understand we're talking about is the fact that the school counselors, per the city's current biennial budget, are funded through calendar year 18, which means December 31st of 18. We're there. The question that I'm understanding is the remainder of your school year, which is your 1718, no, 1819 school year, which would be the funding represented essentially from December 1st through June, whenever the school year is out at that point. So it's basically a six-month bridge that you're looking at. Because what wasn't immediately clear to me, once I started thinking about, was whether or not it was actually carrying into that new school year in the fall. But essentially, I'm looking for confirmation. You're looking for conversation with the council and the council statement on the January through June.
Right. So one of the things I wanted to ask Ty was, when do we start planning for our school year 2019, or 2018, 2019? It's in the spring, and you develop the budget, and we look at it in the, towards the end of the school year, and we approve it in August of 2018.
We start initial projections in January, and then we start actually compiling the budget at the end of the school year, so in June.
And planning for the staffing needs, and letting the staff know that they get to stay on.
Yeah.
So that's the key, I think, is that we have these six wonderful counselors that are looking at whether they're going to have a job the following school year. And so we need to have that assurance while we're planning our budget and planning for the staffing of that. And I know they're staffed through the city, through the Youth and Family Services, but it's, I think, important for them to know if that school year ahead is going to be secure for them. And for us to know that as well.
Sure. Just again, to make sure I'm understanding, if you're starting the budgeting process in January, that's looking at, this is really hard for me, I'll be honest. This is your school year that is 1819. So they'll know that they would have a job irrespective for the 8.
17 and 18.
Till December 18, 2018. But if we're not knowing what's going to happen the remainder of the school year, we could be potentially without counselors for the remainder of the school year, if we don't have a funding model in place.
I just want to make a few comments. This has been a longstanding issue. This has been an issue for all 12 years that I've been on the board. And although I don't have much time left, I do want to emphasize how critically important this is. These are all of our kids. It's not just the school's kids, right? And having a counselor in the school addresses so many problems that you can't address effectively elsewhere. It's a very cost-efficient model. It starts with bullying in the elementary school, it helps kids with home problems, kids whose parents get divorced, kids whose parents get sick. It's really an essential service. I find it very, very frustrating that every time the funding comes up here, it's, I don't want to say it's a battle, but it becomes a negotiation. And I would really encourage the city council to start considering this a line item in your annual budget. As we just went through, Ty emphasized, we have, the school district has limited fundraising capabilities, and we now have less than we used to. And so it's not going to get any better. And given the fact that we have a lot of unfunded mandates that we continually have to address, we are looking to you, who share our boundaries and share our kids, right, to really fund these counselors and hopefully not have to come back and negotiate again and again and again, how many counselors are going to be funded? Are they going to be funded 100%? Are they going to be funded at 80%? Are we going to fund five? Are we going to fund six? I mean, it's just, it's exhausting. And I am discouraged. I really am appreciative of the funding that has gone in the past, but I'm discouraged that this can be an item that we have to come back to again and again, when we know how important mental health is, and we know that this is really probably the most viable effective way to reach kids in trouble.
So I was going to make just two quick comments. I don't think there's any disagreement on the value of them, and I won't speak for the rest of the city council, but I think there's a uniform appreciation for that resource and how much we want to preserve it. The first question I was going to ask Chip, is there any intelligence you can drive around this, what is a complicated timing issue, before we get into the weeds, as the council likes to do?
Regarding the school year funding for the counselors?
Yeah. I know that the timing is tricky, but is there any?
It's not that off. I mean, what we could do in the first quarter, for certainly first half of next year, is normally what we would do, we would see you in June at your mini planning session and engage you in terms of what are the major issues on the budget, and talk about assumptions. And so we could say, hey, we're going to make sure we fund January through June of 2019, and just expressly fund, make sure that that's funded in the budget regardless. And you could, we could get that direction from you. I was just talking to Ty, they need to know by May at the latest. And so we just get that direction from the council by May, if not a little before May, so we can pass it on to the school district.
Yeah, fair enough. Thanks, Chip. And then the second comment, which I will come back to again, which I think I mentioned at the very first school board, city council meeting, I think we ought to seriously revisit as a city council a standalone levy to fund this. If we feel like it's an absolutely essential, critical part of that partnership between schools and city, there's, you know, we are going into an uncertain time financially for the city, and given that, it's hard for, I think it will be hard for us to say anything is protected without some discussion. So with that, it feels like the solution is to begin to have that discussion for a standalone levy that I think would have uniform support throughout the community, but that would take that discussion off the table for a number of years, right? And give some certainty to you all, and we could also build some growth into that, because as you mentioned, we're adding students all the time, and we've got the new schools, so that may add an additional headcount for you all.
I think the school board would be very much in favor of something like that. We did start talking about that amongst the school board as well at one point. As Dare has mentioned, it's problematic that, you know, we can count on our fire department and police department, but the health of our kids is at risk every year. So I appreciate that suggestion, and I hope we can take that a little further. And if you would like any help from the school board in making a request for that in some formal way, we would be happy to do that if that helps the city council move forward.
I'd like to chime in and also just appreciate Councilmember Weisenthal's suggestion about a standalone. I think it would be very well-supported. I think it would be a, we would really be a lighthouse community for the state of Washington. The state legislature, PTA advocacy, Washington State School Board directors have been working hard to try to get mental health counselors part of basic education, and it's not going to happen. It's not going to happen for several years. And this is a place where we, as a community, really could shine by providing six years of continuous support that hopefully then could be renewed, or maybe the state would then step up. And it really is, mental health counseling is really the best practice model for, you know, anti-bullying, for suicide prevention, and for some of these horrible violence things that we hear about.
So then Julie, I guess I'd like to ask you if you could put this on the topic for our community advisory group to consider as they're looking at the bigger levy we might need as a city. I think the two questions kind of need to be asked together.
Yeah. Thanks, Wendy. Considering that our deficit is $2 million, and doing a standalone levy, what you're proposing are expenditure cuts, perhaps? So I'm hoping to engage our community and ask them what they, you know, what would they support? Would they support a standalone levy with the eyes wide open awareness? It will mean service level reductions, or maybe program, you know, elimination in other areas. So, because no matter what, $2 million is, for a budget of our size, it's pretty sizable. And it's, I have minimum staffing levels for police patrol and fire, and I've got to take care of those things. But obviously, our community really values parks and open spaces, and obviously, our right-of-way trees, and there's a lot to manage. And so I'm hoping to engage our community around all those different needs and get their input on what they would recommend. No matter what, I think the key message here is we're out of revenue sources. I mean, and unfortunately, because we are a bedroom community, we're so heavily reliant on our residents, our residential households to carry the water. And we're very sensitive to the fact that tax fatigue is out there, and so the timing is not great. But I'm really, I'm optimistic we can work with our community, have great conversation with our community, and really learn from them what they would really support, or things that they think are just maybe timing isn't right. But we're kicking that off, we're having the group come together in November, but then really, they'll have the work, they'll have to roll up their sleeves in January through, I think, April. So we'll be returning to council fairly soon after that to get council's really final decision on whether or not, what we do going forward.
Julie, I just want to make sure I understand that response. You are going to at least present that as an option in the discussion by the CAG, standalone, the possibility of a standalone levy. I know that you're talking about it in a broader sense, but I just, I didn't quite understand whether or not that your response was actually responsive to Councilmember Wyker's question about making sure that the standalone levy is at least a topic of discussion by the CAG.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, it is. Yes.
I think what Julie was saying was that it's, the nature of this discussion is that it's a cost-containment exercise, and that we would be coming in with a revenue generation that was sort of flying in. Is that right?
Yeah. Or that you potentially may have another levy. If we did, if you did a standalone, you'd have potentially another levy to help with the rest of the deficit. Because the levy for the school counselors would only take up, according to your notes, the notes here, about $627,000.
Right. So you're kind of saying have a menu for residents to pick, is potentially what you're thinking as far as levying?
Not a menu, but if you were thinking of rolling it into one levy as one option, one levy that includes counselors and a menu, not a menu, but a list of other expenses that you would foresee those, the levy covering. And then there's the option of having a standalone levy, which could potentially mean either no other levy, or it could mean another levy with a list of options, or not options, items that the levy would cover.
Right, right.
I do want to also express every, this is the third year I've been to this meeting. The first year, I was in the audience, but I've always appreciated the council members all stating publicly that they really support the mental health counselors in our schools, and that they'd all like to see that continue. And I understand that it is a difficult financial situation that you're in, but that we all hope, for the sake of our citizens, that we come to a positive solution in this case.
Okay. With, can we conclude on the mental health counselors? And let's move on to capital projects that the school is going to take on in the upcoming
So just to review really quickly for city council, we had a 2014 bond that funded three projects, and you can see them here. The high school project, a middle school project, and a brand-new Northwood Elementary. The February 2014 bond, as you can see, was supported to increase capacity. And here you have in the first picture 10 new classrooms added to our high school for 97,000 square feet. There was also a new replacement at the middle school, which was also an addition of a lot of square feet. And then, of course, our beautiful new award-winning, several times over now, Northwood Elementary School. We are very pleased and proud to announce that all three of these projects from the bond of 2014 were on budget and on time. As Ty mentioned, we also have a capital levy. This is a six-year levy, and will come around again in 2022. And so we continue to do other projects, capital projects with our levy dollars. These are the most recent ones that we completed in 1617. We did a major stadium turf replacement, replacing the crumb rubber infield, which is proven to not be as healthy, with a new cork infield. And we also resurfaced the track. We worked with the city public works in collaboration on 42nd Street path. And I always hear the song when I say that. So this project gave a two-block walking path for a safe route to school for both high schoolers and our Northwood Elementary students. So you can see, it's well-used throughout arrival and dismissal time for both of those campuses. Small, but as Brandy, our capital projects advisor, talks about, but not very glamorous project, was our bus lot, which is eventually going to facilitate overflow seating for the stadium. We have this going in stages. The entry to the bus lot was widened this summer, so we now have better and more parking there. We also relocated a fire hydrant and a path to, that will eventually facilitate the overflow bleacher seating for the visitor side of the stadium. It's not a glamorous project, but it certainly has been an important one. Next up were the summer projects of security upgrades to our other three elementary schools, Lakridge, Island Park, and West Mercer's. They were all revised with a secure entrance to the buildings. There is now a check-in system called Lobby Guard at each of these campuses, so visitors during school hours are buzzed in to the campus. Northwood had this as a built-in feature when it was built, and there was a real desire from our parents for the rest of our elementary schools to have this same feature. Another not-so-glamorous, but essential project, fire alarm replacement. Due to the age and parts availability, Lakridge completely had to have their fire alarm system, along with Island Park, replaced over the summer. And we also had to do some major work in the older buildings at Islander Middle School, so that their full fire alarm system was also replaced and tied into the new building. When we opened Northwood, it meant that we were able to do away with some portable classrooms, particularly at Island Park, but we were also able to move some of them into a better facilitated location, which also then opened up the playfield so that it could be used as well. So, bond projects are, the dollars are available to the district all at once. Our levy dollars are more for maintenance and capital improvement projects over a six-year period. So work has to be scheduled within the available dollars that are collected, and we plan it out over the six years. So our future project for 1718, big one for us, is the Mary Wait Pool, which we are, of course, in collaboration with the city on. The focus initially is on the infrastructure, improvements that will keep this pool operational. We are working with a mechanical engineering firm that's been retained, and they've provided some initial information to the condition of the building systems. It's a 40-year-old building, and so there's a lot that needs to be replaced. This year, we'll be taking on the electrical and the plumbing. Impact on the facility has to be carefully planned. Impact on the facility has to be carefully planned. We don't want it to be closed for any extended period because it is used by so many groups, of course, including our students and our swim teams, but also local teams as well. So we're going to make every effort to work around breaks in program. Also in 1718, the high school roofing. Not a glamorous project again, not very visible, but everyone appreciates it when it starts to rain. So in the summer, we are going to be working to, work on the high school roofs. Stadium lighting replacement is another project that we will be taking on for 1718. We're working with a group called StanTech to develop the scope of the work, investigate the pole stability and the condition of the feed wires. Another piece that is for 1718 is the facility scheduling software. It's a new software that we're implementing that will allow for more consistent application of fees and a greater simplified public access for rentals. Future work, synthetic turf installation at one of the grass sports fields at the high school, tennis court reconstruction and potential lighting, roofing at the elementary schools, bleacher and dividing curtain replacement at the high school, various carpet replacement, select boiler replacements, minor furniture upgrades, and play equipment upgrades. So all of these are part of our ongoing capital projects through our levy. Any questions?
Yeah, you know, probably, well, I won't say whether the pool is more important than the counselors, because that would just be crazy. But to the best of my recollection, I'm looking for Chip, I believe that the city is also providing funding for the Mary Wait Pool, just over $100,000 a year, I believe.
$135,000.
It's got a rate of inflation and stuff in there as well. So I think, you know, just as we also have the CAG look at the school counselors, I think equally, you know, the extent to which we would be in a position of having to assess reducing that, you know, funding for the school district, given our financial situation, I'd hope we could make sure to ensure to the, you know, ensure that the CAG is aware that the city has financial obligations to the school district on behalf of the pool.
So the software facility scheduling sounds great. Well, that includes some of the field space as well and some of the coordination we're trying to do with our Parks Department?
Oh, sorry. Yes, it does. We are implementing the exact same system that the city is implementing, Perfect Mind. We'll be able to communicate with them, matching calendars and scheduling systems. So we specifically chose that system so that we can function with the city.
So wow, thank you very much. That'll be a huge, huge, huge process improvement. So thank you for both organizations for figuring that out and getting it done next year.
Okay, thank you very, thank you very much. I, sorry, I believe that concludes all our, oh, sorry.
There's just a few more capital projects, just to make you aware of it, from the city's side. So you are probably, hopefully, aware that last week, the city council approved the Sound Transit Settlement Agreement. That agreement includes over half, $5 million for local traffic mitigation. So you would be interested in probably understanding, well, how does that possibly affect the district? Well, we are very interested in how traffic is really flowing at West Mercer and Northwood. So we're looking at that and seeing if there are potential traffic mitigation projects that we can actually implement. And we will be, I want to say maybe towards the end of November, looking at having, hosting a community-wide meeting to talk about those hotspots where we've seen new traffic patterns. And maybe you've seen the tubes on the street, we're collecting the data now, and then identifying some projects. And so we're interested in getting your feedback and certainly the community's feedback on what those projects might look like. So stay tuned on that. I know our, the staff-to-staff level, we'll be working really closely together on that. And then, it was really a number of city master plans, just to make you aware, we also included in that settlement agreement some funding for the Aubrey Davis Park. That's a well-used, over 25-year-old park. It really needs, it's very well-loved, and it's time to engage the community and look at the recreational uses there. And so make you aware of that, that's something that might impact you. And then that will most likely kick off in the early 2018. And then coming up in 2019, I know that's far away, but we will most likely be working with our community on a parks, recreation, open space plan. So again, doing some future planning, and we would definitely want to engage the school district on that as well.
Thank you very much. Any questions from directors and council members?
I wanted to say thank you for some of the improvements that were made at the 86th Avenue and 40th Street to help with the traffic flow at Northwood. I think those improvements that were made and the sidewalk improvements have really helped with traffic flow. And then I also was curious about, we have one more bullet item on there under future projects, the interlocal agreement for reunification. Is that on your?
Actually, thanks, yeah. Debbie also pointed that out to me, like, oh. So this is a ILA with you to help us should we, hopefully never, but should we ever need to establish a shelter, that we have an agreement with you to use our school, our middle school on the south end of the island. I don't know if you're aware, on the north end, it would be our community center. So I know for, I understand for the recent past, we have used maybe an agreement with the country club, and, but obviously, it makes so much more sense if we can use a public facility. So this is an agreement that's finally kind of gone through your legal team, our legal team, and I think now it's going to come back to the school district for your approval, and then it'll come back to our city council for approval. So this is really kind of heads up, it's coming.
I'd just like to second what Tracy said about the traffic on 40th Street. I've been living in the neighborhood for about 35 years, and the traffic has actually never been better, other than the first 10 years.
And I'll echo that, and also just thank you for that project and the staff working with staff. I think this is the first time in that high school's history where we actually have a crosswalk to the main campus entrance, and that's awesome to see. And also, when I was driving a few weeks ago, I think I happened to see a police officer at each one of our elementary school crossing guard stations, and I think it was Walk to School Day. And it was wonderful to see that cooperation between the city and the school and the police. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for this discussion. It's much appreciated. I think we really enjoy having an open discussion with all the groups together, the city council and the school board. We appreciate the tough conversations we have to have to run our various departments. I think finance is very difficult, and I'm glad we could have such an open discussion. But before I conclude tonight, I think we'd like to say, we've got some members who'll be departing us, retiring. And so first, I'd like to say goodbye to two school board members, Adair and Dave, jointly with the city council. We'll do a more formal goodbye later in December. But thank you very much for your 20 years of cumulative service to the community, to the schools, and to the kids. Your insight and tenacity will surely be missed. And we really appreciate and love you guys for what you've done for us and the schools, and just the value and love you've brought to our community. So jointly from the school, school board and city council, I'd like to say thank you, and we expect your continued engagement for the remaining few months with full tenacity and vigor.
And equally, although he is not here, this would have been the last joint meeting for council member Kraus, who unfortunately couldn't join us. And we too hope that the school board of directors can join with us, and thanking him for his 18 years of service, which I found out is the second-longest of any council member. He was outdone by Ben Werner, who served for 21 years. But now with Dan, there's no certainty he won't run again at some point. Just a couple words, that Dan and his wife Claire Meeker, they've actually been on the island since 89, they raised their two children here. And, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't call out Dan's constant commitment, I think, both to the schools, to the parks and playfields that we all share, as well as his tenacity in looking for some creative solutions to some of the, both, as you can say, logistics, but some of the financial budgeting issues we've had. So if you would join me in thanking Dan for his service as well.
So thank you all very much. And with this, we will recess this portion, sorry.
For the council's purposes, can we get a motion for excusing Mayor Bassett and Council Member Kraus?
I move to excuse Mayor Bassett.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
We have a vote.
That's right. Okay, is there a motion for excusing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The school board will reconvene in 15 minutes? Will reconvene at 7 o'clock when we will take public input. Thank you.